Into the study session, Maurice.
Mayor Davis, I'm members of the city council. Over the past nine years, the city of Emeryville has been involved in a project to reconfigure the I-80 Ashby-Schelmoun interchange to improve access to and from the city of Emeryville. Most recently, in 2006, the city council approved a contract with the firm of HQE to prepare a PAED, which is a project approval environmental document needed by Caltrans for the approval of the project. An administrative draft of this environmental document is now ready to be distributed to the staff of Caltrans, FHWA, the city of Berkeley, and the CMA for comments. Once received, the comments will be incorporated into the document and the PAED will be ready for publication. We anticipate this PAED will be published in this May and a 45-day public comment period will follow. And as part of the public comment period, there'll be an open house for the public to comment on the project. Emeryville's staff and consultants will most likely also be required to make a presentation to the city of Berkeley's Transportation Commission during the public comment period. After the public comments are incorporated into this draft PAED, the city council will be requested to certify this document. And there'll also be a need for the city to enter into a cooperative agreement with Caltrans to move forward with this project. At tonight's study session, I'm going to ask HQE to make a presentation on the progress we've made over the years, and she'll summarize the next steps towards implementing the project. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Heidi.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? I guess I should use this.
Yeah.
Is it on?
You're just talking to the top of it.
Talking to the top? Is that working now?
There's the TV people. Is that one of the new ones?
Can everybody hear me? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Davis, council members. I'm Heidi Orin with HQE, and we'd like to give you an update on the I-80 Ashby-Schelmoun interchange improvements project. Last time we were here, I believe, was last June of last year. Just a little background on the project. As Maurice indicated, it's been in the works for about nine to 10 years now. In 1998, the city initiated the project study report, which actually evolved from the San Pablo Corridor study in order to provide interchange improvements that would actually improve mobility in the corridor, particularly in the vicinity of the Powell-Christie interchange intersection and as well as at the Ashby-Seventh Street intersection in the city of Berkeley. Caltrans approved that project study report in 1999, and there were three viable alternatives, interchange configurations, that came out of that, the preferred alternative being alternative two. Just as that document got signed, a value analysis study was performed, and a roundabout alternative was recommended as another viable alternative in lieu of using signals for the interchange. Caltrans then began analyzing the roundabout, looking at it not only from an environmental standpoint, but from a traffic operations standpoint. However, their lack of expertise in analyzing the traffic operations of roundabouts spurred Emeryville to hire a consultant to support the operations analysis of that roundabout. In the middle of all that effort, the state funding crisis hit, and the project was shelved. Subsequently, in late 2004, the city of Emeryville, with funding from the Alameda County CMA, reinitiated the supplemental project study report, and as Maurice indicated, hired HQE to get that document approved. We were successful at getting both Caltrans and FHWA to approve the roundabout concept and the supplemental PSR last fall. We since moved into the project approval and environmental document stage, in which we've prepared all of the environmental technical documents that analyze the environmental impacts of both alternatives, as well as a no-build alternative. And we've identified the preferred alternative, which is the roundabout alternative, looking, comparing the environmental impacts, the traffic operations, which are superior on the roundabout alternative, and the costs. As Maurice indicated, we're now at the point where we have an administrative draft, project report, environmental document, ready for review by the city of Emeryville staff, Berkeley staff, the CMA, FHWA, and Caltrans, who are all involved members of the project development team. I just want to describe the two alternatives quickly that have been analyzed in the environmental document. The first is PSR alternative two, which came out of the original 1999 approved document. Just to orient you, the blue is the existing facility, and the colors you see are the proposed interchange modifications. Interstate 80 is here, running east-west, and Frontage Road, Point Emory, and the Bay are in this area to the top of your graphic. Bottom of your graphic is Schelmoun and Bay Street. PSR alternative two provides full movements to and from Ashby-Schelmoun-Bay Street, as well as maintaining the movements at Ashby, using signalized intersections at the off-ramp termini in lieu of roundabouts. It also provides bike-ped connections in the form of the bicycles using Class II facility, eight-foot shoulders, and the pedestrians utilizing a contiguous sidewalk along, next to the traffic. The roundabout alternative-
Wait, before you leave that, could you just go back and outline from one side to the other what the bike pedestrian alternative is, instead of just speaking about it?
Sure. You bet. It goes from here, across, and down on this side.
No, no, no. You need to go slow. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just start again, please.
Trying to get control of my mouse. Sorry about that. Crosses from the Bay Trail, crosses the Frontage Road, heads along the sidewalk, across the bridge structure, across at a signalized intersection, the eastbound off-ramp, and up Schelmoun-Link Road to Schelmoun Street.
So the only crossing there that isn't signalized is the one back at Frontage Road?
Correct.
With this plan?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
For the roundabout alternative, very similar freeway operations, however, in lieu of signalized intersections, we have proposed roundabout intersections. Here at the westbound off-ramp termini, as well as on the east side to serve eastbound Interstate 80, as well as Schelmoun Street. Now, the main difference, another main difference in this alternative is that it includes a Class I separated bicycle pedestrian facility. And again, I'll try to go slow. From the Bay Trail, you would cross at grade at the Frontage Road roundabout, be on a very separated bicycle pedestrian path that's 10 feet wide, cross the structure with a barrier separating you from vehicles, at-grade crossing at the eastbound off-ramp, and also at-grade crossings at the entry and exit ramps to and from Schelmoun Street, and then landing finally up at the Schelmoun-Bay Street intersection.
So you've got three unsignalized crossings?
Yes, yes, correct. One, two, and then three here. That is correct. And those would be yield-controlled at the entry and exit points to and from the roundabout. Now, during the environmental process, we have met with the East Bay Bicycle Coalition. We met with them back in October, and one of the issues, their main issue with this alternative, was exactly what you pointed out, the at-grade crossings here on the eastern roundabout. They asked us to take a look at how we could grade-separate those. So we did that, and came up with an alternative that actually comes off of the bridge structure, parallels the eastbound off-ramp, and comes up and over the eastbound off-ramp, and then terminates at 65th Street and Lacoste. We met with them again last month. They were very pleased with this development. This adds, by the way, about $3 million to the overall project construction costs. The other element that they asked us to look at was the roundabout being proposed at the Frontage Road intersection. They felt pretty strongly that an always-stop control, just as exists today here, would be a better solution. When we had prepared the original traffic studies, the reason that roundabout is there is because in 2030, this intersection is shown to operate at level of service F if it stays as an always-stop control. If the city council could give us a statement of overriding concerns to violate the general plan policy to allow intersections to operate, that says intersections should operate at a level of service D or better, then we've done some traffic studies and determined that this could remain as a four-way stop, without queuing, without affecting traffic queuing back into the western roundabout. But again, we would need that statement of overriding consideration to allow it to operate at a non-standard level of service.
So with this option, the only potential unsignalized crossing is the one at Frontage Road, just like the original plan?
Yes, that is correct.
And that could be eliminated by having a four-way stop?
A four-way stop. That is correct. Yes. Again, the major differences between the two alternatives is the Class I versus Class II bike facility, separate pads versus the contiguous pads, and signalized intersections versus no signals with the roundabout. Current project cost for alternative two is about $30.8 million. The roundabout alternative is $30 million, so it's about $800,000 less. And then, as I stated earlier, the roundabout with the bike-ped path option is about $3 million more, so it's at $33.1 million. As I said, we are at the point where we are going to distribute the admin draft for review by the project development team and get comments from them prior to public circulation of the draft PAED, which should be sometime in May. Maurice stated we'll have a 45-day public open house, a public review period, and in the middle of that, we'll hold a public open house to give the public direct opportunity to interact with us and ask us any questions they may have about the project. Then we'll respond to the comments and finalize the project report environmental document in July, and then come to the city in August for approval of the mitigated NIGDEC under CEQA.
Let me stop you there.
Yes.
Is it at that point in time, the action to take a look at whether or not there's overriding concerns for the four-way stop? Is that, would that fit in there?
It would fit in there. Maurice and I actually discussed that, and we were thinking that we might actually come to you a little earlier with that, so that it could be in the final project approval environmental document, Mayor Davis? Because it's a change we would want to capture, and capture the costs, and revise the graphics, so it would actually be a separate council action. And then, finally, of course, Caltrans and FHWA will need to approve the Fonzie under NEPA, and we estimate that to be in about October of '07. Next steps, after we're done with the environmental document, of course, we still have final design and construction to go. The important column, I think, for everyone to focus on here is the unfunded amounts. You can see that for final design, the project is underfunded by $800,000. CMA currently has $1.7 million available, and overall, the project is underfunded by $20.5 million. CMA has also put in the '08-'09 STIP augmentation, $10 million towards the project right away in construction costs. That was approved through the CMA board a week or two ago. Still has to go, of course, to MTC and then through CTC, but everyone's fairly certain that that $10 million will be there. As you saw, though, we have about a $20.5 million shortfall. So other potential funding sources could be the SHOP project, the HBRR project. Caltrans is interested in replacing those existing overcrossing structures that are non-standard with the new structure that's proposed in this project. So those elements are around $6 million.
Your placement, does that include removing them?
Yes.
So I have a question for you related to that. I drive under those two bridges every day, and I see chunks of concrete-
Yes.
-that are, have been gouged out by trucks, and rebar showing.
Yes.
So how much higher would the new bridge be?
Those bridges, I believe, are right around 15 foot four or so. The new bridge would be over 16 and a half feet clearance.
Okay.
With false work, you're going to add a little more than that for the, so it'll be actually probably 16.9 or so. So they are non-standard, and they do get hit a lot, and Caltrans is aware of that. And that's why there may be, again, a potential to obtain, you know, five, six million dollars to replace those bridge, existing bridges, and build a new structure. Of course, because we have the bike-ped element in here too, maybe some money can be garnered from the regional bike-ped programs to go towards the project. I know that Maurice has also indicated that the city is working with, in Washington DC, with the Ferguson Group to try to get federal funding for the project. With that, any questions?
Yeah, where is the bike pedestrian group now? I mean, if we go to the option that we looked at, the bike-ped option-
Uh-huh.
-and consider the overriding considerations for a signalized intersection, then do they prefer that over PSR?
Yes.
PSR one?
Yes.
Or PSR alternative two?
Yes.
Okay. And I may remember this wrong, but I thought somewhere along the way that there was some feedback in this process, and I don't know that this has been formally vetted with Berkeley, but that the only design that they would approve would be a roundabout design.
Yes, if I remember correctly, during the VA study process, one of Berkeley's concerns with the PSR alternative two was that it added three signals to Ashby Avenue. And of course, they're concerned about the intersection of Ashby and Seventh. So they were saying no, they didn't like PSR alternative two, and would be in support of a roundabout alternative.
Okay. All right. And then, the, I presume, though, that if you, if for some reason you stayed with PSR one, you could do that same overriding considerations and get rid of the last-
Yes.
-Frontage Road issue.
That is correct.
But the difference, so the real difference would be, in comparing what bike pads do between alternative two and the bike-ped option, is that bicycles and pedestrians would have to stop at those signalized intersections, whereas if they have their dedicated lane under the bike-ped option, they don't have to do that.
That is correct. In addition, bicycles under PSR alternative two would be relegated to riding in the roadway shoulder.
Oh, they're on the shoulder?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Maurice, could you comment on the letter that we received from the East Bay Bicycle Coalition?
Sure. Essentially, the letter is in support of the roundabout solution with the separated grade bike-ped bridge, and they were endorsing the concept with an always-stop on Frontage Road, essentially because it's a common kind of crossing for cyclists, and it didn't seem to them to be a hazardous situation. They also felt that, they agreed that a lot of the traffic on Frontage Road is there because it's a lot easier than driving on the freeway at times, and if we did have traffic backing up on the Frontage Road, maybe people wouldn't try to get off the freeway and use it as a bypass, so.
Any other questions, Ruth?
Has this particular option been shown to Center for Independent Living or other disabled rights groups?
It hasn't, to my knowledge. Do you know if it's-
No, no, it has not. No, it has not.
So-
It is ADA compliant, however.
So I would request that that be done, because crossing at the four-way stop might be challenging.
Well, it'd be typical to crossing any street with one lane of traffic in each direction.
Yeah, I'd just like to see some disabled rights groups weigh in on this.
Sure.
In much the same way the Bike Coalition has.
Correct.
Sure. So in particular, Vice Mayor Atkins, at the Frontage Road, if it remains an always-stop.
Well, regardless, they should just look at this.
Oh, sure, sure. It is ADA compliant, though.
I think it's very important that we look at the mailing list for your public meeting that'll be held later in the spring, and be sure to have the advocacy groups for the disabled on that list.
Absolutely, Mayor Davis.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yes.
And Mayor-
Any other questions?
Well, I guess maybe more of a comment. I understand we're not taking any formal action tonight. This is just a study session. But, I mean, personally, I think, I prefer the bicycle, you know, the bike-ped option. I know it adds $3 million to the cost, and that's not an insignificant amount of money, but given the separation it would create for bicycles and pedestrians, it becomes a real overcrossing, as opposed to one that's going to be very unsafe and very difficult for people to take. So I would certainly support that, and conceptually, I would also support the stop, the four-way stop, despite 2030. You know, traffic is a reality of our lives, and we have to figure out a way to make, despite congestion, to make it as safe as possible. And it seems to me the only way people can safely get across there as bicycles and pedestrians is if there are stops that they can take advantage of to do that. So at least at this point in time, that's where I would favor going.
Councilmember Kirkie. Mayor Davis, I have some comments, and I provided an outline, and it's two-page. Are there copies for the audience members?
You have a copy?
No, okay. If you can make some quick copies, I'd appreciate it, but I'll go ahead. I think that the goal, I'm at the top of page one in my handout, the goal is to provide pedestrian bicycle access across Interstate 80 sooner rather than later, and I think that the key is that second part, sooner rather than later. What I've done is compare the proposals based on cost and the potential obstacles delaying and preventing the project. It seems to me that there are two basic approaches. One is to incorporate new pedestrian bicycle access into a proposed reconstruction of the Ashby interchange. Now, earlier, we saw an old plan. I'm referring to it as the old plan. It involves eight at-grade lane crossings. Now, I don't think that that's meaningful access, and I dismiss it out of hand. It would not work well at all. I focus in on comparing what I call the new plan, which is a bridge over the eastbound off-ramp, and then three at-grade lane crossings on the west side, and that's to cross the three lanes of Frontage Road. This design, I feel, is adequate. I agree with DeCassis. But what's essentially happening is that Caltrans is shifting the cost to the city of Emeryville for this. Heidi mentioned that it's $3 million. I'm not sure why it is that the city has to bear that cost. And so I'm comparing this, what I'm calling the new plan, to a separate pedestrian bike bridge that would start roughly at 65th and Lacoste. Now, what I'm doing here is comparing the cost and also the likelihood that it will actually be built, likelihood that it will be built. Which basic approach will yield bike pedestrian access sooner, at what cost? Now, first, what I do under 4A, I look at the combined ped-bike-vehicle bridge, what is the new plan, what I'm calling the new plan. Factors regarding timing. Initial regulatory approval process has begun. Initial plans have been prepared, but as Heidi mentioned, there are many more regulatory hoops. Some money has been committed to the project, some of it has been spent, some of it has not yet been spent. But the bottom line is that $20 million remains unfunded, and that's after, after we get the $10 million that is supposedly going to definitely happen, but is not yet committed to this project. So it's at least $20 million, if not $30 million, underfunded. It's unlikely that the interchange reconstruction will incur in light of the following factors. It wasn't funded in the current cycle, and the reason it wasn't funded was because Caltrans is looking for projects to fund that actually improve the access on the freeway itself. And so that's why this project wasn't funded. There's also what I consider a dubious assertion in the staff report that will, it will, this project, this new plan, will reduce the traffic congestion at the intersections of Powell and Christie and at Seventh and Ashby. The reason I call it dubious is because I firmly believe that it's a fallacy that one can reduce traffic congestion by improving vehicle access. It's, I can't stress this enough to my colleagues. It is so counter, it's not only counterintuitive, but it has been proven that when you build in more vehicle access, what do you get? You get more traffic congestion. I believe that improving vehicle access will actually worsen traffic congestion in the city. So if you look at this from the perspective of the Hippocratic Oath, I think we are, we will be violating the Hippocratic Oath by improving vehicle access. We need to improve public transit, not improve vehicle access. Let's look at the cost factor. So I talked about factors affecting the timing. Let's look at the cost. It's been represented that the cost for the pedestrian bike bridge on the east side is $3 million. And again, I mentioned that the implication here is that Caltrans pays for the added width of the combined bridge, but the city pays for the bridge over the off-ramp. Again, that doesn't make sense to me. The pedestrian bicycle access is required by this document called the Caltrans Deputy Directive 64. It sounds like it's straight out of Catch 22. The document says the following, and I have it footnoted at the bottom. "The department fully considers the needs of non-motorized travelers, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and persons with disabilities in all construction. This includes incorporation of the best available standards." And my question is, if this is something that Caltrans is required to provide, then why is it that we're paying $3 million? I mean, what, that doesn't make sense to me. How is it that this directive is satisfied if it's not satisfied by Caltrans? Okay, page two. Now I'm going to talk about the separate ped-bike bridge, which I've proposed, and I'm going to go through it the same way I did with the first one. The first is factors regarding timing, and then the cost. Regarding the factors, the timing factors, there are no plans other than a rough sketch. So that's a problem. In fact, that is, been leveled as a criticism. Well, there are no plans, and so why should we go with this? Because this other one is ready to go. The second factor is, I think, cuts in the opposite direction. I sent a link to the graphic that I provided on my website. I sent that link to BCDC, and their informal review was favorable. And I excerpted what they put in their email message down at the bottom, footnote two. This is coming from the executive director of BCDC in a message he sent to me in September, last September. "Based on a very cursory review, we think the bridge at Ashby, which is the separate bridge, the bridge at Ashby wouldn't present any insurmountable problems and could improve access to the shoreline." Now, granted, BCDC staff is providing this comment without having brought this to the commission, and so we should take it as it is. But it's still, in the same message, Will Travis is also reviewing the proposal for a bridge at Temescal Creek. And there, he says, "Well, there's certainly environmental concerns about putting a path along the Emeryville Crescent." So he doesn't pull his punches regarding the other proposal for a bridge across the freeway. But on this, this is all he says, so I consider that to be favorable. Okay, back at the factors regarding timing for the separate bridge. No effect on vehicle access. The reason I put this in is because, of course, converting the off-ramp, or converting the on-ramp south of Powell would have significant impacts. I think that they would be mitigated by the fact that there's another ramp there. But here, you have a proposal that would not really affect vehicle access. The Frontage Road would not be affected. It would be simply moved over. On the east side, Lacoste would have to be narrowed, but that could be done by eliminating parking on the east side of Lacoste. Likewise, there's little environmental impact- Likewise, there's little environmental impact. The bird habitat would not be affected because that part of the bay is, there's not really a bird habitat like there is in the Crescent and the Bay Trail is already there, so that could not be an objection. The bridge, of course, would be a structure up in the air and might, it might block views. I don't think that that would be a huge factor. So, basically, I think that the factors that would cause this project to either be delayed or not are not great factors and I think that it can go forward. The real, the real issue is the cost. And we had a, a consulting firm look at the proposal. Their estimate, I think, was $11 million. I'm not sure where the $12 million came from. And so, there you're comparing the $12 million for a separate bridge versus what Caltrans is saying, we have to pay the $3 million for the separate bridge, for the bridge across the off-ramp. Let me just look at my notes. Okay, what I mentioned here is, is that Caltrans is essentially going to incur costs for pedestrian bicycle access on the combined bridge that they're proposing. And what I would like to see is them to shift that money that they're committing for pedestrian bicycle access to a separate bridge, which would satisfy their requirement to provide pedestrian bicycle access. Then the second thing here, I say, cost comparison must factor in opportunity costs. And I think that this is really the most important thing in, in my comments. And that is that I really think that, assuming that we're going to get this pedestrian bicycle access by this, this project, this interchange project, essentially it's going to condemn pedestrian bicycle, the failure to get pedestrian bicycle access because it will tie it to this project, which is currently unfunded for $20 million. And there has to be some recognition that the more you delay something that we obviously need, there's a cost involved in that. I'm not sure how to characterize that in terms of dollar amount, but every year that something gets delayed, if there's an opportunity to spend more money to get it sooner, I believe that we should do that. How much, I'm not sure, but I think that's what's going on here. Question then is, well, okay, Fricki, you're talking about spending $12 million. Where are you going to come up with the money? And the answer I provide here is that the city could float a general obligation bond. Another funding source that has been talked about, that we talked about back in October was a redevelopment agency bond. So, I think that there are sources of money to pay for a separate bridge. The last thing here is separate bridge advantages. Like I said earlier, a, a bridge that has only at-grade crossings of three lanes on frontage road, that's an adequate design. I just don't think that it's going to happen anytime soon, but this separate bridge provides an option where there are no at-grade crossings, so that's certainly a better design. Caltrans alternative has the pedestrians and bicycles right next to a four-lane bridge. Well, I think that it's, it would be a better experience to have a separate bridge where you're not close to four lanes of traffic. And then again, I mentioned here, there's a good chance that this separate bridge could be constructed sooner. And I provide a little footnote and I'm footnoting here this, this study that we commissioned, I mentioned earlier. This is the, the ALTA, ALTA planning study. And what this study says in, in evaluating this project, it says, "The construction of a bike pedestrian bridge independent of the Caltrans project would have some advantages. A project could be constructed sooner if the city is willing to fund it rather than waiting for the state to allocate funds for the Ashby interchange." And again, it's $20 million under, unfunded, $20 million unfunded. Okay. Then the, the question I hear at the bottom is, "Which approach will yield sooner access?" The worst-case scenario is, okay, Fricki, we do what we, what you want. What if we commit to the separate bridge, tell Caltrans not to include pedestrian bicycle access in the interchange reconstruction, but then the interchange gets built first and the separate bridge gets significantly delayed for some reason? That would certainly be the worst thing because it wouldn't, it would not provide access sooner. The solution I propose is to pursue both approaches simultaneously. The disadvantage, of course, is that you are incurring planning costs for two projects, but there's a great advantage in that we cover our bases. Whichever project moves for, moves forward faster is the one that will provide the pedestrian bike access that we need. So, what I'm suggesting is we compare the cost of pursuing both plans versus the opportunity cost of potentially delayed pedestrian bike access. And again, I can't really, I can't really provide a dollar amount for the opportunity cost, but to the extent that we have added planning costs, I think those are justified by being able to move forward with something sooner rather than later. And then the last thing is, okay, well, what, what are you talking about in terms of a study? And so, I got the, the, the capital projects budget and, and so I was looking, where can we find this money? And I noticed there's a line item for San Pablo Avenue Development Assistance. In the, in the fiscal year, I think it was 2009, 2010, there is a, there's an expenditure here, a budgeted amount of $2,135,000. So, I am proposing that that be reduced by $135,000 to fund a study to prepare preliminary plans, just like, just like we have with this, this Caltrans thing. We have, we have this, this proposal here. And so, what I would like is for a separate bridge to be studied to the same extent that this is studied. Whether that's more or less than $135,000, I don't know. The reason I chose $135,000 is that you'll notice that that's the amount that the city has currently spent for, for this proposal. City funds $135,000. So, that is something that I would like my colleagues to consider at this meeting, even though we were told that no decision needed to be made. But my motion is that we fund the preparation of preliminary plans to the same level that we have plans for this Caltrans proposal and that we spent, that we fund that for $135,000 and we take that out of the San Pablo Avenue Development Assistance line item.
John, could I ask you to, let's put that on the next agenda for discussion because this meeting was advertised as a study session and I don't think the public expected any kind of action to be taken. I, I understand what you're saying and I think the ideas have some merit, should be discussed. And if we have it properly noticed at the 20th meeting, I'm sure that'll be plenty of time. Would you accept that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I appreciate that. And just, just as a point of reference, the reason I, I brought this up is because in the staff report, they, the staff report juxtaposes the Caltrans interchange redo and mentions that there's this proposal for a separate bridge. So, I kind of piggybacked on that and I, so, based on the fact that it's mentioned in the staff report, that's why I thought we could decide it tonight, but-
Well, let's, let's bring it back on the 20th, Patrick, for consideration. And can we briefly, is there anyone? Councilmember Bukowski.
Yeah, I want to say that, you know, we've been working on this project for a very long time and it seems like we finally have reached agreement on something that we can move with. You know, it's not ideal, it's not the best, it's not, it's not what everybody wants, but it takes a lot of different people in a lot of different places to make this happen. And I, for one, feel that we finally have reached some kind of agreement that's acceptable. And so, those are my comments.
Could we hear, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment briefly on this study session item? John, briefly.
Very briefly, briefly. I'm John Sherman, I live at Pacific Park Plaza. I totally, totally support what John is presenting. I'd really like to see the, the bridge decoupled, if possible, so that we could get it sooner. And I totally agree with, if we plan for better access to the freeway, we're going to get more traffic moving through Emeryville. And I, I think my concern is, we're going to make this one big freeway ramp that's going to go from Mandela Parkway, where all the development is coming from on the south side of town. It's going to be zipping through town as more of a cut-through, which is already a concern in Emeryville. The one thing I would like to throw out there as an option for John's plan is to move the, the bridge further down towards the Watergate Towers and to where more of the development is. I think it would be more usable if that could be a pedestrian, pedestrian access from the east side of the freeway to the west. That serves the peninsula better. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I'll sign in.
Brian Donahue, 4333 Holden Street. I appreciate Councilmember Fricki's sooner rather than later concept. I also wanted to reiterate something that, pardon me. At least Councilmember Cassis has said, and I believe some others, and that is that in the, a meeting quite a while back where Councilmember Fricki brought up his, a notion of two bike ped bridges over the freeway in Emeryville, one at Temeskal Creek that was discussed at, at recently, or the Watergate, by the Watergate people. And then this one that's being discussed tonight, Councilmember Cassis and I, like I said, I believe maybe some other councilmembers said, expressed some interest in, in supporting at least one of those crossings. So, it looks like this Temeskal Creek crossing, perhaps, there was some equivocation on that, it sounds like, even though there's no voting yet, there's still a $200,000, $200,000 study to be done on it. So, this is one of the two, the separate, the separate bike ped, ped bridge is, would be one of the two. And so, I would appreciate if the council could support at, at least one of the two. Frankly, better both, but that's all I would like, that's all I would like to say about this. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to be heard? If not, Maurice, thank you very much. Thank you for your very good report. This meeting is adjourned. We'll move right into-